Blessings we have and for the love you have for us, for the protection you give us. Father just has to be to be with this new, this new year here in, here in Godly. We have our students, our faculty, all those involved. May this be a real productive, real successful year for our students. Father just guide us tonight as we meet. May all things be according to your will. These things we ask of you to say.
Thank you, Dennis. At this time, we will move into public participation. Do we have anyone sign up? Next, we'll move into business items. And first, we'll consider and take possible action to approve the change order for Godly High School Phase Two Construction Project.
Rich, did you want to start this off for? Alright, so last month, we made you all aware of contingency funds running low on high school Phase Two and the need to supplement those to get to the end of the project to handle whatever else may come along the way. And we talked largely about some expenditures that were anticipated and we just didn't put a contingency line item in the original contract for that. And that is primarily conformance set items. If you recall, we made an early bid set and not the final, final documents that were for construction. And so the changes that occurred between that early bid set and construction set had a few costs involved. And then secondly, we talked about how JSA was delayed on their plan review. And when they came back with comments, those had additional costs as well. So you should have a handout in front of you that itemizes each of those costs in those two categories and it adds up to $951,414. So we are requesting a change order to supplement the contingency fund in that amount. If you want more detail, there's some line items behind there and I can talk to any specific line item if you like. Demolition associated with utilities that we had to relocate for JSA.
I have one question. Hindsight's only 2020. What can we do if we had future projects that would possibly certainly navigate the issues that we had with JSA with this particular project? Is there anything?
I don't know that I have a good answer on that one because we did give them the opportunity to review our plans several months prior to issuing them with several follow-ups and did not get responses. But we will continue down that same avenue this weekend.
Slide Aubrey said this is the change order that we had planned on, so we knew it was coming. And it contains the performance plan scope that would have been included in the final set of documents. So this is actually a good transparency piece just to show what we're doing to finish everything up.
And if you recall, we did that early bid set to reduce the impact of escalation costs and get ahead on some long lead items. If we took the 2% escalation cost, it would have actually been more than $951,000 in that window that we tried to escalate the project. We're still coming out even or better.
So the $951 is combined with JSA. So I heard you just say that if we had waited, it would have been more than the $951.
Correct. The way escalation was trending at the time, we were estimating 2% a month for escalation.
Do we have a better estimate than just greater than the $951?
I mean, it is just an estimate because, you know, we took bids when we did and just the trends at the time were 2%. And so 2% on the original contract of $66 million would have been more than $951 if I, I did the math last month. I did not refresh my memory.
I'll make a motion to approve the change order as listed.
I'll second. How about motion, Montaria? Second by Craig. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Next, we'll consider and take possible action to approve the change order for the Godly High School Phase Three Construction Project.
Okay, so for Phase Three, we are recommending a $0 and 0 day change order to you. So this does not change any of the terms of the contract, but we are looking at adding the legacy practice field renovations, which is $685,000 to add that scope to the project. But we have the money within the current contingencies within that project to cover the costs for that. It's just because it is added scope of a significant amount that we did just want to bring that to your attention and allow you all to take action on that. But it does not change the cost or the duration of the contract.
And I asked the coaches to come here just because we've talked about how we're growing. We're going to need a second lighted field. Do you guys have any comments you want to share with the board about why that's important to have that field? Soccer, Wendy, y'all start practice?
We start after November. I think it'd be important so we have somewhere to practice and somewhere to play games to get started.
I know you want to get on this mic.
Hello, I'm Evan Steneros. I'm the new head soccer coach here at the high school. Yeah, concern would be just so we have somewhere to practice that's lit up. Our practices start after November break and we, our games are pretty late, get started already by then. And then we practice, I know we all practice early in the morning, so we need somewhere lit up that we'd be able to practice.
Coach Lowry, did you want to mention at all about just our numbers?
Yeah.
Yep, yes, sir.
Just as a reminder, the current football field at the high school will be in construction after this football season and therefore not available during soccer season. So that's why they need an alternate place to play.
So our seventh grade boys, just football wise, was 75 playing football in the seventh grade. We've got 50 in the eighth grade. And overall, the seventh grade boys, we've got 90-something kids participating. But just football-wise, we've got, we'll start seventh and eighth grade. We try and get seventh grade, eighth grade, or seventh grade A, B, and C so all our kids can play. And whenever we start playing six junior high games. And then at the high school, as we move up, we'll have junior high, our JV A and B, freshman A and Bs, hopefully a C. And just finding games, sometimes we have to play them at home, even if our JVs are playing away, play them at home. You start playing seven A ballgames on one field, I mean, it makes for a long, long night, you know? And it's on a, it's on a small night. If we had another place to play, then it'd be half the time.
Yes, sir. And just as a reminder, this field was originally in the scope and removed because of construction escalation costs. And Reader's done a great job at cost savings, so now we want to put it back in. So this is really just a transparency piece because it's not, it's not an additional cost. So it's no addition to the GMP.
So how long is it going to take to renovate the field behind Legacy?
Reader could probably speak to that in greater detail before meeting in a couple of weeks, but we think it'll be around three months. So we are going to be kind of getting close to getting it done mid-November, but we'll continue to coordinate those efforts till we get there.
The target is to be done before daylight savings, so they, they practice.
So...
It's not three months before daylight savings.
Very close.
Since that was originally in the proposal and then was taken out and has that, were there any cost savings with that or changes or is it the same price?
So it was not originally in the bid set for Phase Three, but in the bond planning efforts that we did for the original bond package. And then, you know, we had, unfortunately, the postponement of things just due to escalation. I don't think there's cost savings, there's normal cost escalation on this field, just like there has been everything else the last couple of years.
And coaches, or I guess the question, do we feel that the current field is unsightly to play on?
Yeah, behind Legacy. Thank you.
And you probably haven't driven by there lately, but the irrigation doesn't work at all, so it's just, it's more to a crisp.
Nice brown field.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
So what is the anticipated impact to any of the events that would be held at Legacy during the next three months while this is being renovated? They usually have field days at different times. I don't have a schedule in front of me, but do you consider everything?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We do have the, you know, the 22 acres right next to them, so they're still going to have a place to go to. They just won't be there. They want a track, basically.
Okay. Thank you.
You just brought up a good point that the irrigation system is not gorging at Legacy anymore, so this includes irrigation?
Yes.
Yeah, the scope of this replaces all of the drainage below the field as well as just the conditions of the field itself, new topsoil, new turf, and irrigation.
And it's also drilling oil, so long-term that'll save us quite a bit.
Can you give me the total again of what this change order is?
$685,000.
Thank you.
Does it include any renovations to the track? It does not include the track renovations.
Is a track usable?
Not for competition, but for, you know, casual events or community use, things like that, it would be fine. It was an additional, I think, $225,000 roughly to resurface the track.
Can the track be resurfaced at a later point without damaging the field?
Yes.
Correct. I believe the track renovation was originally part of the bond package as well?
I remember correctly, I think so.
Thank you. Mr. Barry, thank you for being here. I didn't want to call you, make you come down on Monday night, but you use the field too right now. What kind of shape does that field in?
It's pretty rough.
Pretty rough?
It's rough. There's some holes in it. It's not safe for full-speed practices. I mean, our little guy's doing it.
Yeah.
We know where the holes are, but it's, it would not be for a bigger faster, for a junior high, high school. It would not be good.
So Pee-wee currently practices on that field after school, so when they start on it, which could be in a few weeks, I was going to call you, I'm glad you're here, we'll get Pee-wee on our, the new practice field up here. So we won't, we won't start that before they're ready to go there, so they'll have someplace to go.
Yeah, we're actually using Legacy right now.
Okay.
Four nights.
Oh, good. Okay.
I'll make a motion to authorize the, yeah, yes. Is that correct? The superintendent to approve and sign the change order for the Godly High School Phase Three Construction Project as recommended and presented?
I'll second. Sorry, I thought I was on the wrong way.
Excuse me, have a motion by Marissa, a second by Krista. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Aubrey. Next, we'll move to 4C, which is workshop to discuss the Godly ISD budget for the 2023, 2024 fiscal year. Do we have to pass anything out, Brian? Thank you, guys. Hey, Coach, Coach Lowry, can you hang on just a second because we're about to go over some other stuff.
I think y'all remember tonight, I'm ready to talk about the 2023, 2024 budget. Included in this packet is a little bit more information than y'all received on Friday and Saturday. So we go over this packet and is there any questions y'all have on this or any other questions we had on the previous information? So this page is essentially the same as the front page.
Okay, so, and I wish I showed this on this sheet the first time that I sent you off last, last Friday. The only change is the two gray lines, one at the top and one at the bottom. So the top line is the estimated fund balance that we will finish with at the end of this fiscal year as of 8/31/23. It outlines each one by each fund, the general fund, the food service fund, the debt service fund, and finally the total of all three. Then at the bottom is the effect of the three budgets, general fund, food service, debt service, and what those fund balances would be possibly as of 8/31/24. The general fund speaks for itself, we're trying to pass a, we're trying to pass a balanced budget this year. So, you know, we would probably, we would finish with approximately $7 million in fund balance. The food service, if things go as I believe they're going to the rest of the month of August, that would be the fund balance of $106,000. Now, over $300,000 of that came from one school year, 2122, back when we were getting reimbursed for every meal we served from a national school level program. So that was a year where every student qualified, basically. So we got a lot more money that year. And we chose for 2223 to not change food prices, because we knew there would be escalation of food prices, and then same thing for 2324. So the thing we'll have, we should have a balanced budget for food service, except, obviously, you will notice that there's a deficit by $224,000. That $222,000, excuse me. So the way that, what that's coming from is we believe that we can use a portion of that fund balance that we've set aside to pay for some of the tables that will be used in the lunchroom as we're expanding here at the high school. This manual has double-checked, it's legal, it's proper to do that. And so we think it's, could use some of those fund balances to, and it will be, it won't be 100% of lunch tables, it will be around $222,000 of the local use to expense to take away from using that from the bonds. Does that make sense?
Is that what it's showing, is a $280,000 capital outline?
Yes, I agree. So, you know, again, depending on how August ends up, this August is kind of a strange month for food service because they're having startup, a lot of startup supplies that have on a date in the summer. So a lot of that close supplies end up in the month of August, but they also have quite a few of the revenue coming in. So we'll just see how the month of August ends up. And again, that is just a close budget, so we didn't finish strongly in August, and we thought we don't have to use that whole $280,000 for the equipment, the lunch tables. Then finally, the debt service fund, we're going to get into that in a minute, what makes up, how that started and has built up. But you can see that we will use approximately $150,000 of that fund balance for the 2324 budget. That's, remember, that's where the debt payments are on bonds, so that money can only be used to pay for bonds. Any questions? I'm sorry, go to the back if you all stop me if you have a question. As to the next page, should be the page listed as tax valuations, history, total tax rates of growth. This is the same information y'all have been seeing, except for far right column. So I've shown on this same sheet, I think, for the past two months. And I apologize for having a very hard time estimating what our 2023 valuations were going to be. Number one, because we did not know what the legislations have do and what homestead exemption we were going to have to work with. So I know last month I said we were estimating about 1.8 million or so, a little over 1.8 million in one plan valuation. Reason why that's lower is because we're having to deal with now the increase of $60,000 in homestead exemption account. So after all said done, we're going to grow about 19.4% for the year. The MNO tax rate, you can see there, the INS, is our total tax rate. And so we can go over now the fund balance for the INS. Well, I didn't include this four back as we go, but starting probably 2010, we had 1.8 million in fund balance. And you can see, that's kind of the tail end of our escalation of values that were derived from our gas well properties. And obviously in '16 is when we had a really, really large decrease in tax valuations. And also in 2016 was the first time we sold bonds. It had been sold in a long time. That was from 2015 bond election. And so we just continue to, you know, from '17, '18, it very grew to $20,000, $30,000. And so it's kind of hinged up. And I'll, I'll prepare to speak a little bit about why we have grown that fund balance because all that happened was when I was here. So I'm going to speak to that. I was just going to say, I like this because it shows, I mean, as you guys know, we had one of the lowest, if not the lowest, total tax in three counties. And the three counties were in Johnson, Tarrant, and Hood Counties, over 30 school districts. And we didn't, it didn't start increasing until we had to build the high school, when we truly became a fast-growth district, and we had to start building the facilities for all these great families moving in. So it shows how good stewards of the money you are. But it also shows, you know, we had this conversation back in 2010 that we were going to need, we were going to need this flexibility now. So it just shows how, how long you have, we have been talking about this, you guys have been talking about this, now being ready for the growth that's coming our direction. And so you can see that the 23 school year, this year, we'll have used around 2.3 million in that fund balance. And you'll also see a minute how previous projection from Jeffrey Roberts showed that is exactly what we'd be doing. So Mr. Roberts had us potentially build the fund balance up if we do, we would be a fast-growth school district, and continue to be a fast-growth school district. Any questions on any of that? Okay, so the third page is an estimate and where we may have to pull some triggers to adjust the budget between now and budget adoption. I didn't want to put surprises on y'all on the 28th, hopefully the budget. So the center column is basically what we're, is on, is on the front page, what we've been working with, the same dollar amounts, and the same enrollment and attendance rates that we've been working with all, all spring and summer. So you can see that on that page, it's 3,060 students at 94.37 attendance rate, which is what we finished the school year, but last year. We had some good news today, that for the first week, we had 98% attendance rate, but I think sure as the good state of the nation. For four days, we had really high attendance. So the far right column is just to show you if we were budgeted 95% attendance rate, the same, the normal numbers, it would only give us about $45,000 additional funds. And then the left side is potential numbers that we may end up with, with 3,031 enrollment, the same 94.37 and attendance rates. So that will cost us about $206,000 in funds from the state, and we would have to adjust budget accordingly to decrease that. So the things we'll be looking at would be, if there's any FTEs on the higher, if we can stop the purchase of some of our fixed assets that, I know maintenance and still you all have, has a, they have a large budget, they're wanting to buy some fixed assets and get them up for a while, and some other things that are normal, you know, we could always authorize some more transfers and something. So do you guys remember the demography study that we had done back in 2021 projected that we would this year be at 3141? Well, with interest rates going down, that growth has slowed a little bit, it's still coming, but it's slowed. So rather than budget at 3141, which would be too much, we budget at 3060, which is almost 80 below that. So that's what Brian was building the budget on. Well, we're getting another demography study done right now, and he's going to present at the September board meeting. And he gave us just an early look at it, and he gave us kind of two runs. He gave us a high run and a more conservative run, or a mid-run and a more conservative run. Well, his mid-run was about 3,100 and his lower one was 3131. I'm sorry, 3031. So I told Brian, back it down to 3031, let's be more conservative. And if, if it does go to 3060, then we can, we can pull levers and we can open things up. But that's why we, we're going to reduce it down to 3131, just to be more conservative. Historically, we've had... I'm sorry. 3031 here, thank you. Yes, sir. Historically, we've had quite a few students enroll between first day of school and snapshot day, which happens last Friday of October. And if, if that average were to pan out, we would end up between 3030 and 3050. So it's, I think it's very conceivable, we could get our 3060 number, but we're going to be more conservative, go down lower than that. So I did just want to show you that. That will be the potential change between now and end of this meeting. And remind me what today's enrollment is? I think it's 2982, which is just a band. They, I mean, they literally haven't come in until, until time. So, and you know, they said they've actually got quite a few, about 80% enrolled, they just won't come in and do their final paperwork because they just don't think, do they think it's time? Yeah, she said we got quite a few still in the bucket, 30 or 40 in the bucket. It will be definitely a moving number between now and snapshot day. It's a, it will be definitely a moving number between now and snapshot date.
Do we have a decision on transfers? We're accepting.
Limited transfers based on the, each school's capacity per grade, so.
Correct, so we're not, we're not accepting third grade, I know, the title of third grade, and I think kindergarten. So it just depends on where we have capacity.
Okay, so the next page, I did want to read, I did want to say that it is in the previous packet, but I did want to, I went ahead and printed it out in gate for this new packet, so it would be in front of y'all, so we can talk a few things about it. So the, at the very top, obviously, you'll see the proposed tax rate for MNO of 0.7892 and INS 0.50. The, I want to call, section called total prized value, the third section. If you notice, our prized value is actually 2.1 million. When they take all the deductions out and so forth, including homestead exemptions and everything, then our taxable value comes in at 1.7. But if you're ever looking at those numbers, those two numbers to be confusing, our actual prized value compared to our taxable values. And you see the number there, total prized value of the new property, okay, the second line, so it's 241 million. That is properties that were, became, they were on the tax roll after January 1st of 22. So they really never were included in our tax rolls until they've been, they've been on the tax roll as of January 1st of the next year, makes sense. So we had 241 million, 39 million of that came from Nelson County. But this, and saw the numbers today, and saw that was interesting, that, you know, probably 99% of our growth came from Nelson County, and the other two, the other 2 million came from Aaron County.
So Brian, I must be a little slow. I heard you say that the taxable assessed valuation on page two and the total taxable value of all property might not be different. Walk me through that again, because I thought they were describing the exact same thing.
Yeah, they're off by, like, I think, $100 or $200, so 1,765 million.
Well, I guess, I guess I was seeing it to be somewhere around $35,000, $40,000. So maybe I missed something.
Okay, I'm sorry, you're correct, yes. So one number is the official number, the, the other number is, an estimated number comes around Central Grayson District, those two different entities come in, and that was just about the same number.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And, okay, so going down to the end section versus comparison of proposed rate from last year's. So notice our MNO last year was 0.9746, this year we're going down to 0.7829, it's an almost 19 cent decrease. MNO will be, our MNO is staying the same, so our total tax rate will be going down almost 19 cents. And the, the next section prepares to talk about the proposed levy with last year's on an average residence. So it really, truly is a simple average, and I wanted to ask, ask that question. So it's literally that total market value or taxable value divided by the number of accounts. So each year, when I started, that average taxable value was, I think, well below $200,000. That keeps up, it's an open years. The, so you'll notice the current year's average market average market value is 345,000 per home. The average taxable value is 245,000 per home. You'll notice that's exactly $100,000, that's a $100,000 homestead exemption that they're counting on passing in November. So currently, it's 40,000. The election will be the added additional 60,000, the total of 100,000 homestead exemption. And the calculates the taxes due on that average residence. So I found it very interesting that even though our average market value went up almost $74,000 per home, the average tax due is going to go down to 249,000.
So I just want to confirm that the line that's this year includes the additional 60,000 homestead?
Yes.
Not approved yet, but probably will be.
The, this year, I think they changed the law, and basically they made it mandatory for the Central Grayson District and the Tax Assessor to assume the 60,000 that we want to pass when we use all these calculations.
So that will be an effect for the taxes collected and starting in October, even though
Actually, the, the bills goes out, the bills go out November 1st.
But the bills won't reflect the additional
Yes, it will.
It will?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't think there's been a homestead exemption yet that's not passed, so let's get them up to the public. So is there any questions? Again, this was in our packet last week, I did just want to go through the details, and I'm sure y'all understood the difference between, you know, for example, appraisal value versus taxable value. It's something, you know, some of the differences may be ag exemptions or stuff like that.
So the tax savings that we're seeing on this section, $249.02, is a combination of the lower taxes for the ISD in addition to the added 60,000 in homestead exemption.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, actually, that tax rate is the highest that we can assess without a voter-approved tax rate election. That's why it's at 1.289. If you look, be the seventh section, notice the voter approval rate, the highest tax rate the district could adopt before a voter approval of an election is the 1.2892.
Okay, so the next page is going to be the, should be the issues of the, the pro forma that Jeff Robert presented in July with the sale of the remaining 18 million. So first thing is, Mr. Roberts does use a very conservative growth rate there on, I actually, there, column two. We knew we were going to grow going 3, 24. So once that happens, these, that's very conservative estimates, we would probably continue to grow more than the seven and a half or five percent that he's using. But again, he's using these conservative numbers to project being able to make the tax payments. So fiscal year 23, notice column four and column 13, that total was about 2.6 million that he was estimated that we would use out of fund balance, actually ended up being around 2.2 million. So, and I guess, maybe a little confusing, column four was the capitalized interest that was created when we sold the bonds, that was built into the bond sale to give us extra INS money to make our bond balance. And then column 13 is the actual fund balance that was projected to be used. So that capitalized interest actually goes into fund balance technically. So that's where about the 2.6 million of projected fund balance needed with 23 on payments that was completed this week, but we only actually used 2.2 million. So the projected fund balance, like I said, from page one, after this year will be 4.7 million. And if you notice, he only uses about 200, 2,250, 2.3 million of that fund balance for projected bond payments over the next three years. Yet we will not, we should not be using all of our fund balance for the INS fund. And that goes, that bond sale list was closed on the 23rd of this month. Make any questions on this? Y'all already seen this before, or it's one of the kind of forgettable?
I'm sorry, I may be a little slow. So give me a minute to digest the numbers. I heard you calling out numbers that didn't quite directly align with what I was seeing here, so pardon me a minute while I finish looking.
No problem.
What was the interest rate those bonds were sold at? I saw it out here.
I think it was 4.67 or, they basically say total interest cost. So he was projecting back in July to be as high as 5%. Five, and the parameters of that list at 5, 5% that y'all approved in July.
Okay, Brian, let me repeat to make sure I heard you and I can correlate the numbers.
Okay.
So current projection after this year, if I go back to page one, is that the INS fund balance would be right at 4 million, 3.9?
After 23.
After 23.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so what I heard you say, and I think I've got the numbers correlated, is that over the next three years, 24, 5, and 6, we're projecting to utilize 2.2 of that remaining 3.9 that would be in the INS fund balance.
Yes, those were his projections back in July. I didn't actually give you all the actual numbers, these are just projections. They will be a little lower than that. One, one reason, the, that column five, the asset heat, is going to go up because what the legislature did, the 60,000 homestead exemptions were going to be code harmless, so we'll be getting a little bit more money from the state than he projected on that.
But it may fluctuate a bit, but in general, that's what I'm hearing.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
By the way, thank you for that. That makes things a lot clearer in trying to parse out what we're doing. Thank you, sir.
So the last, I think, I'm sure the pages are, there's some budget planning guides that were provided, some, I'm sorry, some of those, I just stapled upside down, I apologize. Each campus, so you go with projected numbers from the screen and some flat dollar amounts, allocation per student. High school, obviously, you get more allocation per student than you would at an elementary school, because it just costs more, educate that, that same student. So these were just guidance. They were, for them to start working their budget, because they know they have to budget based on program, we'll call it, that, that says, pick, those pick numbers, those program numbers, basically. So they have to say, it's a budget for specialized students, it's a budget for violin students, it's a budget for CTE students, and so forth. And so these are just, again, these are just planning guides. I just want to give you all, show all these as an example for what principals have to work with when they're setting their budgets. Again, they're not, it's not ironclad, it's just a beginning guide.
Before we let this Nick come up here and explain why her budget is bigger than everybody else's combined, Coach Lowry, thank you for staying behind. Is, just, as you stay here, just because you were here, is there any, any high points you want to hit on any of your budget increases? I know yours is mostly due to increased kids in the program, but any other big expenses, helmets, or anything like that that we?
Yeah, our helmets. The helmets have gone up tremendously in shoulder pads, and as far, I mean, we've, we've had a good fundraiser last year, and it was good for us because we told the kids, if they raise $500, they get a brand new helmet. And that's about what the helmets cost. And we were able to use our budget to get to junior high, 30 new helmets. And, but through the fundraiser, we bought new helmets, you know, so you, I would say probably eight years ago, if we bought new uniforms, tops and bottoms, it was $10,000. You know, just for our tops alone, which, they're good for about three years. And tops alone, they were $13,000 last year, and we weren't able to get the bottoms. So yeah, I mean, and then the increase in kids, it's, our junior high needs new uniforms and, so yeah, it's, our fundraiser really, you know, really helped us, but as far as budget alone for all the kids that we have, keeping them in safe equipment is top priority, is top.
Thank you, Coach, appreciate it. Just Nick, do you want to come up here and talk a little bit? We kid with Nikki, we wish we would have had her during the design in the wild, because she's been a big help.
I'm not even going to use the E-word, just for that, Mr. Roberts. So a lot of ours comes from really having an opportunity for me to learn our programs here and then make adjustments to move forward so that we're serving our kids in the best way possible. So I mentioned to you briefly, back in the fall, that the state changed accountability for us, where we were able to purchase full classing for Microsoft Office certifications, and do that at an early discounted rate from $10 to $15 per kid. And now, when we are serving kids, in my opinion, in a better way, and more aligned to their program of study, and offering them certifications inside of their pathway is a lot more expensive. So a drone certification, instead of a student taking a Microsoft certification, now we're paying $120 for a drone certification. Instead of us paying, you know, $15, $20 for a Microsoft certification, and some of the stuff that we're looking at for our ILE student, $200. And while, in that way, we're serving students better and providing them certifications that are aligned to the actual work that they want to do, it's more expensive to do that. It's also more expensive to send kids on, or texting organizations, CTSOs. And as we continue to grow and develop those programs, TAF is a great example. Previously, we were doing FCCLA, we were critically successful at that. We had three kids go to nationals this year, and that was in Florida. And for us to provide that experience for kids, it was expensive. But I believe with everything inside of my heart that that was what's right, right by those students. They earned that opportunity, the leadership skills, the resiliency, the ability to speak in front of people that they gained in that experience was huge. And competing on a national level is something that we can't do or replicate inside of our classroom. So that, along with just the 10% increase in student enrollment, I calculated on Friday, we were 9.9% student growth here at the high school alone. And that with inflation increased costs for our welding students to be able to purchase steel and practice their welds for certification and pointability skills. And that adds up pretty quickly. So that's, that's kind of where increased cost for CTE comes from, and if there's anything specific, I'd be happy to speak to that piece. CTE comes from, and if there's anything specific, I'd be happy to speak to that piece.
So, what the increase that's currently projected, um, how have you accounted for operations at the new facility that will be open sometime around the first of the year versus what you're operating in now?
So, a lot of that will come with FFNE purchases, that future furniture, furniture equipment purchase, but something as simple as a portico. And we've got FFNE to purchase porticoes for the new building and the new welding shop that will be over there, along with new welders, welders and all of the equipment they need there. But there is equipment out here in the Roland building that is aging. They have one portico currently, Mr. Pinkerton has asked for a second one just because of the heat and for safety reasons, we can't roll the base down, um, since it's not air conditioned inside of that space. And they have an engraving machine that they use to make all the wood flaps for the district. That thing is many, many years past its retirement date and they need a new one that's still a computer monitor, and it's the old school computer monitor. And all of that equipment is purchasing out of what we hope to be an increased budget for this year, but then it's just by the wild and all of the programs there, that's being budgeted out of FFNE for those classrooms.
If you've got questions about any, any other departments, Brian has some, some bullet points of some of the increases that you guys are, any specific questions?
So, I did have questions regarding the high school. Um, there was substantial increase there, but it wasn't clear to me if that was, um, just because of the addition of the wild or it really was driven by some, something different we're doing here within high school.
Um, so, we did ask for some specific information on some of the items this, uh, this week. So, I know, um, high school grown 63 students so far this year, I know what's gonna end up with that. The, and just some of the things are just, some of it's just inflation. Um, all the principals noted that, uh, copy paper has just gone through group, I think they said $700, it's gone up, $700 per pallet, uh, which is, I think they buy several pallets from, here, I mean, um, you know, and Mr. Flood's document, for example, you know, just food for students has gone up, you know, Chicken Express has gone up, pizza's gone up, they feed the students, anytime they feed a student milk. Um, with, with the increase of students becoming, you know, Mr. Flood just had to take care of caps and gowns and supplies and calculators used during testing and so forth. So, that was mainly, mainly what, uh, Mr. Flood gave me. Um, like he said, calculator 100 variable piece, so, just add 10, uh, those little things along, just the, uh, little things like that, each line item, each item tends to add up.
We added teachers.
Yes, we did. Um, actually, actually, we added one, technically, one person, it was not a teacher, it was a, uh, pair of slash tennis, CTE receptionist, kind of one. We've not added, added any teaching staffs at the high school.
So, back to the high school, um, just looking at the numbers that you provided Friday, um, depending on your starting point of comparison, the, the budget was increased by 20-ish percent, um, 22, I think, to be exact. So, regardless, fairly substantial and while I, I appreciate the specific examples, copy paper, you know, whatever specific caps and gowns I, I don't know. But that, that in total, on average, comes out to 22%.
Right.
So, I, I guess that's a part I'm having trouble getting my head wrapped around, why I see the high school increased by 22% and yet I see the middle school, which should probably have the same copy paper cost, that the middle school was pretty consistent. I need to double check the numbers, maybe it was even went down. Help me understand, uh, why is the middle school able to hold their cost and high schools not?
So, included in this report in the high school, well, CTE was included in that.
Okay.
So, uh, a large, very large portion of CTE increase alone was... Yeah, but CTE was a very large portion of that increase. So, middle school has, has grown, but not quite as much as the high school, and I know, uh, Mr. Fraser and I were talking about a little bit of that today, so they've gone up about, about 4 miles more.
Yeah, they scheme the thing as a pretty small percentage.
But they also haven't used near, their, their budget amount either. Oh, Mr. Flood was having a really hard time with the last year, um, the graduation work because he had to rent so much, uh, some chairs and stuff that he was not anticipating. So, he's asking for that extra money, or like I said, Mr. Fraser, he is still well on the budget this year, so that's why he didn't ask for the increase that much.
Yeah, no, I, I get that, um, but we won't be renting chairs this year.
Right.
Or at least I wouldn't expect so.
Are there CTE costs anywhere outside of the high school budget?
Yes, there are CTE classes at the middle school.
So, those are in the middle school budget?
Do you know that, Nikki? Any of the middle school?
Yes, they are listed on this schedule report.
They're ag courses. They're all listed under my budget, under CTE, but there are ag courses at the middle school.
So, any, any cost for the middle school classes would come out of yours, okay? You know, I could have Mr. Flood, he, he likes making videos these days, maybe I can make a little video, Craig, and give us a little explanation and I can send that to you guys.
And similar questions would be for, just looking at RB Godley, uh, their increase in budget was close to 50%, 48%. So, um, RB Godley is that much more?
That's definitely one of the ones we'll be looking at, so their, their budget's been, will be, will be reduced.
Now, again, we have different number of students at, at the different elementary, so you can't say, well, they should all be equal, but, um, I guess in my mind, you know, we're having growth overall unless we go say that the new housing is drawing more students to RB Godley, therefore their budget has to increase more. But then, that's gonna make me come ask the question, will show me that here's really where the growth is coming from.
Do you have their bullet points, RB's?
Yes. All of the, all of the elementary talked about, they've added students and teachers, um, cost of degrees, it's question paper, um, RB has added two new special program classes, sorry, added new program classes, two high school classes and one ECSE class, so they're adding a lot of special ed classes this year. And then, um, they're talking about buying some more pieces to add to their curriculum. I'll go there on my turn.
So, curriculum would be going to all three elementarys, correct?
Sorry.
Aren't all of the elementarys probably the same curriculum?
Well, for example, if, if she's adding special ed classes, they may need special ed curriculum. Uh, but they also have, they have a limited amount that they can, is by their own, you hope, or if they, you know, if they like a particular part of American media, or if they see that they need a bigger part of American media, they can use that in their own budget with that instead of a regular budget.
I know RB has the majority of our 3K classes, um, and that behavior class, sometimes those are more expensive.
And those are at RB Godley?
Yes.
Yes.
They were last year also, correct?
The special ed classes.
Would that really constitute that large of an increase in their budget for, from one year to the next?
So, they've added two high school classes, one ECSE class and two homeschooling classes.
Four new classes.
Right, that's all special, those are all special ed. But again, I will be going over this, if I do phone one more time, make sure, um, they look in line. For example, if, you know, less of you, less of you and, uh, RB should be fairly similar, um, because they have also the same, I guess, legacy, obviously doesn't have 3K students, so that's, they're, they're a different animal. But, uh, so, again, we'll make sure that all three budgets are remotely in line, roughly in line.
More questions for you. Uh, noticed in, there was a category called data processing. Yes, that was to the good, 92K.
Right.
Um, that was substantial. Um, what's driving that? It's, it's nice to see a, a negative number, but...
I think that was a part of technology. I mean, it was a trade with technology, with the technology budget.
Right.
Then, the, the next question is in the CLI category, that did cover all campuses, did it not?
Yes, it did. Yes, the CLI budget is for all three, I mean, all six campuses, sorry.
Okay, thank you.
I have a couple of questions. Um, on the band budget, I noticed there was two different increases, um, one was under general supplies and one was under professional services, and they were pretty significant. Do you have any kind of bullet points on that?
I did not see anything to band, but I know for fact that he's saying that there, the program has grown at the middle school, why I bet, they're gonna have to look at some instruments there, and then, obviously, um, the bus driver will, we're giving, uh, sorry?
Truck.
The truck driver, sorry, not the bus driver, the truck driver, um, will be that increase also.
So, that's probably what the professional services is?
Yes, that's the 6219.
Okay.
And I know Joe, Joe works really hard on, um, giving volunteers, they do so many trips and some of those are overnight, that they don't ask for volunteers, place up overnight trips.
Would we be able to get kind of an estimated, you said that the number of band students at the middle school has greatly increased, can we get something more than just greatly increased, get some more primary numbers?
That was on, that was in the packet, I think.
Extra.
On the second page of the old packet.
Those were 22 and 23. So, is he saying that all of the increase to last year's numbers from the year before or this?
This year compared to last year. Um, well, these are 22, 23 numbers on here, because, and they don't know, since 47 occurred yet.
But they should have a kind of idea of how many band students there are.
I was gonna say, he said 48, uh...
48, he said.
More like 46 increase in overall band, you know, so, I don't want to do that.
Can you verify that for us to get back to us?
Brian, I was actually gonna ask, because you did provide us with some numbers of the fine arts and all the things today, is there any way we can get last year's numbers as well, so we can compare?
Those are last year's numbers.
The ones that you gave us separately today? There was an email that had all the student count, uh, each, maybe it wasn't you, maybe it was someone else. Well, remember about us, those, those numbers, can we get last year's too? Is there a way to measure?
There's a copy of what we were planning on, it's just, this is in the board book, and they, I asked them to figure out, is your passion, and that is what's...
This year's. We need this year's.
Um, a couple of years ago, we utilized a, a tool to look at the average cost, again, realizing this does great, breaks it down to individual categories, but, um, of how we had cost per student and if we had so much increase, then here would be a data point of, uh, how our cost compares to the average. Have we run that yet and provided any output?
Let's see, I've got the, uh, where we can, let's just say, if campus has X amount of students, they're getting, that wouldn't say they should get, wait, I can, I have that, I can do it tonight.
Thank you.
It's a very large package, I didn't want to get into that, but I'll talk about it.
You know, I like data.
Any other questions here, Brian?
So, no, another question's for me, but if I can at least pass along kudos, Brian, I know it probably seems like I'm grilling you on the budget, but one thing I need to give you the do's on, you brought us a balance budget, and that's something we've been trying to be consistent with, is have a balanced budget, we have to keep it that way. So, thank you again for putting the effort in, working with all the administrators, the coaches, the, et cetera, to make sure that we do have that. Even though there's some, some substantial increases, you still brought us the balance budget, so I appreciate it.
Is your 3, sorry? That you brought us a balance budget?
Thank you.
Any other questions for Brian? Thank you, Brian.
We, we do not have a need to go into closed session tonight, and...
A motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
A motion by Terry and second by Krista to adjourn. If there are no objections, we will stand adjourned at 7:11 PM. Thank y'all for coming out tonight.